I am calling to order this meeting of the Town Council of the Town of Silver City. The Grant County Girl Scouts will now present a flag ceremony and will then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please stand for their presentation?
Don't carry any things. Color guard advance. Color guard post new colors. Please join me in the battle.
To the fight of the United States of America and to the God who watches us. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the Girl Scout promise. On my honor, I will try to serve God in my devotion. Color guard, please.
Thank you. You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is ceremonies and there are none tonight. And the next item on the agenda is proclamations. And since the week of March the 6th through the 12th is Girl Scout Week, the town would like to honor its Girl Scouts with a proclamation. We have two council members, Counselor Bediston and Counselor Kano, who are both former Girl Scouts and I would like them to come down and help me with this presentation. Whereas March the 12th, 2016 marks the 104th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America founded by Juliette Gordon Lowe in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. Whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. Whereas, girls discover, connect, and take action to make their communities and the world a better place. And whereas, more than 3.2 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 104 years of this American tradition with 59 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to America's girls and proudly proclaim the week of March 6th through the 12th as Girl Scout Week. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the official seal of the Town of Silver City to be affixed this 8th day of March 2016. Thank you.
Is this for me? Thank you. Thank you so much, please.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is that a motion for a short break for cookies?
No.
I think those in the audience would love a cookie. And we have one person on the sign up sheet, Mr. Bruce Ashburn, and I'd like to welcome him to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. It's my luck, of course, that... Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. We'll start again. It's my luck and good fortune that I get to follow the free cookie giveaway, so I won't be as popular. But I am here with some good news and just like to take a couple of seconds and let you guys know that the PNM Power Up Grants are back in, ready for this year's grant cycle. The opportunities that they offer is to support community and neighborhood revitalization projects, promote area improvements and green space development, and to create meaningful public spaces. And the reason that I am in front of you this evening is because for the first time in the existence of these grants, municipalities can apply for them this year. So I wanted to make sure that you guys had this information, it was in front of you, and if you have any questions or if I can be of assistance in any way, please let me know and I'd be more than happy to help any way that I can. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is council comments. Counselor Kano.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I have is, I've been receiving complaints about, there's some people downtown that have been collecting signatures on a petition, and that's fine and that's lawful, but a bunch of people have complained because they're feeling harassed by those individuals. So the best thing you can do if you're feeling harassed, if you're feeling like you have to run down the street to get away from them, is to call the police. Because you have a right to be downtown and you don't have to be putting up with that. So please, call central dispatch and then they can come in and deal with the situation with those people that are being a little bit harsh with some of our public people. And then the other thing, completely different topic, I'd just like to give a little shout out to the 8th graders at Snell Middle School. I spent last Friday with them doing Career Day, and they were a really, really great bunch of kids. They know a lot about politics and they kept me on my toes and I really appreciated being there with them. And I would just like to thank librarian Hannah Wex, who invited me, and the principal Christopher Rotman for having me there, and hopefully, maybe next year we can get some more of the council involved in that. Thank you.
Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I did ask, I did get a couple of calls asking if the town is willing to leave the stop signs on Cooper Street and Broadway, make that three-way stop, and to take into consideration, I said that they were going to stop here. And also, the people are still going a little bit too fast down on Broadway. So that's another thing that we need to... Got it?
Yes, we kept track of the way it was after the bridge situation because we wanted to see how it affected the traffic downtown, seeing as we had never had it without the parking the way it was and without that stop sign in a long time. So after a while, we probably are, we're going to look at some, look at the situation to see if we need to put the stop sign back and some of the parking back. But we are going to leave that three-way stop up at the top. That is a given already.
Excellent. Counselor Ray, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, a year ago, we were gearing up for the demolition and the reconstruction of the Hudson Bridge work, and now it's done. And a year ago, we were kind of anxious about the SoCo. We've gone to movies at the SoCo. Woo-hoo! And a year ago, we were feeling the bumps with the plastic bag ordinance implementation. But now, thanks to good research by the Office of Sustainability, which I call Office of Saving You Money, we have good data showing the savings provided by that to the town in terms of landfill costs. And we've seen good photo documentation of how those hideous blown bags have dramatically decreased, improving the beauty of our town. Just want to say, small steps that makes a difference. One of the things I want to talk about briefly is Counselor comments tonight is the emphasis that I like to have and that other councilors here have on local living economy, which really has three components: shopping, buying, and being local, so go to the movies at the SoCo, and then buy something downtown; encouraging local entrepreneurship and encouraging local financing and investing. There are three events coming up that relate to that, and I'll try to be brief. This Thursday, day after tomorrow, is the Southwest Mexico Green Chamber Green Drinks, and the guest speaker will be Troy Sodabredin. So if you wonder what the plans are for the expansion of the brewery, or what things are cooking with the oseau, come to Molly's Steakhouse at 5:30 and she will be presenting and talking with us. The next thing I want to talk about is that with cooperation with Western and the Small Business Development Center, the town and the Green Chamber, we're going to bring Christine Morgan from the State Economic Development down here to do a workshop on the 15th, that's a week from today, at the Small Business Development Center, beginning at 4 o'clock. And this is in response to a lot of people coming and saying, gee, are there Lita funds that could be used for a project that I'm interested in or I'm already doing? So come and find out. There will be time for one-on-one, short consulting afterwards. And then directly at 7 o'clock after the Lita workshop, there will be a forum at Western in the Global Resource Center to share ideas and information about highlighting and marketing our downtown. So that will be an action-packed day. But please, join in if you have ideas, if you have projects. We want to encourage entrepreneurship in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bediston?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I'd like to congratulate everyone that was re-elected and to our new mayor as well. It's going to be a great year, and a great couple of years for everybody who just got elected, so I'm looking forward to it. I just wanted to say something which I think most everybody, hopefully by now, has recognized, that the stop light, the traffic light, at 14th and at Silver Heights Boulevard is working. Yay! Yeah, so now it will take the normal amount of time to go through the traffic light area with waiting for the traffic light to change. So just want to remind everybody that it is working, so make sure that rather than looking for a stop sign, you're actually looking for the traffic light itself to see what color it is. Because I think we've all become accustomed to just stopping, so... And I noticed that a little bit today when I ran through it twice. We had some folks stopping and it was green and they were just, they were still doing the traffic, the, you know, stop sign thing. But thankfully, and I want to thank our staff, and I know that it was unexpected, the expense that we had to go to to do that, but that's why we always try to have a little bit of a push-in set aside, so thanks to the staff for working on that and getting that done. I know it took some time, but it's much appreciated. And I just want to echo what Counselor Ayman Smith said. Please do come to the Lita workshop that is being held. I'll be there in attendance, just being there along with some other folks. I don't have a business that I want to start. I can't imagine doing that, but this workshop, as well as others that we hope that will come forward, will provide opportunities for public-private partnerships and for folks to know kind of what options they have to get funding or to get assistance in getting a new business started or to expand a current business. So please do look for, we'll be making announcements all the way along about that. And the other, only other thing I wanted to mention is, last year when we did the Lodger's Tax Awards, one of the things the council had requested was that there be mandatory training for everyone who applied for Lodger's Tax. So that is being worked up. I'm working with Alex and with LeAnn. And the training date will be put out along with the RFP in the next, I think by April is what I think she's looking at doing. It will be similar to the way the Community Investment Fund that Freeport had did it, which was a really great way of doing it, which is at least one person would have to come to that meeting. And it's really, we want to do it all in one fell swoop so everybody gets the same information at the same time. So look for more information out of our purchasing folks. They'll have that. It'll be up on the website, all that sort of thing. And we look forward to providing everyone with the same opportunity to get some information about what we'd really like to see when you produce those responses to the RFP that we put out. Just some consistency and a few other things that the council had recommended last year in making the actual packets a little bit lighter to carry and easier to carry. So that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to thank the members of the council for being so helpful to me since the election, lots of good suggestions and things that will help me in conducting this meeting. I appreciate all of your input and all of your help. Does any council member have any additional comments they'd like to make?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually did forget about another meeting. Talking about the meetings, I remembered. Wednesday, the 16th, which is next Wednesday, at 5:30 PM, there's going to be a focus group at the library to talk about ways that the library can be more utilized. And this meeting is specifically for Hispanic members of our community. We want to make sure that Hispanic members are being heard as well, so there's going to be a presentation and then some discussion, and there will be light refreshments and also a drawing for an Amazon.com gift card, so please come and join us. Again, 5:30 on the 16th at the library.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Bediston.
Counselor Bediston, okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does any of the council have any changes they would like to make?
Mr. Bediston?
Okay, moving right along, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City on February 23rd, 2016.
Is there a second?
That's where I second the motion is stated.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is staff reports. Mr. Brown, do you or any of your staff have reports that you want to make?
Mayor, I've got two short reports, and then I've got, first, I'd like to introduce Gary Stady and his guest. This might be new to you, Mayor, but the town has been working very closely with Gary Stady on a bunch of community projects with the JPO program, but he's got an Eagle Scout who did a project for the Town of Silver City, and I want to introduce him, have Gary introduce him and talk a little bit about his project.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Mayor, members of the council, excuse my allergies due to the season. I'm with me Michael Good and his father here. Michael is just finishing up his Eagle Scout project. I'm not sure how many of you know what that means, but it's a culmination of about eight years, seven years at least, of pretty diligent, focused work. Don't want to in any way detract from the Girl Scouts that were here. Wonderful opportunities for these two organizations to build strong and productive young citizens in our community. And I'm going to let Michael explain to you what he did for his Eagle Scout project. It requires quite a lot of coordination and work. While he's doing that, if, I sometimes feel like I need to ask if I could approach the bench, but may I bring these up and pass these around while Michael's visiting? Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. As he said, my name is Michael Good, and I just, I just completed my Eagle Scout project. My project consisted of fixing up around five picnic tables at Ryan's Park by the Big Ditch. I was, this is a really good project that Gary Stady gave to me because me and Pat McGator, which was helping me trying to get a project and stuff, we couldn't really get a hold of anybody else, but this came up and it was just, it was, I was really happy. And I was also really happy when I got everything donated. Foxworth donated all of the wood, and I was so grateful for them. And Ace Hardware donated all the paint that was needed to repaint the benches. I was really happy about that. So we just had to replace the old wood that was on the metal frames. So me and my dad, we cut the wood at our house, and then we replaced it on Friday. We replaced the old wood and we put the new wood on, and then Saturday we repainted all of it.
Does any of the council have any questions for Mr. Stady or Michael for comments? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Michael. So they're ready for you, ready for a picnic?
Yes.
Yes, did you get the style or anything on your side?
No.
Not at all? Because you're special working project. So thank you very much for doing that for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have a quick question. Have you had your Eagle Scout ceremony yet? Because I know, mine, I have an uncle and a cousin that are both Eagle Scouts, so it's an incredible thing to complete. I mean, it's very difficult, and your project sounds very, very worthy, just like many Eagle Scout projects, they all are. But when do you have your ceremony?
I go to meet Pat McGator tomorrow, actually, to talk about that. So we'll plan that all out.
Well, congratulations for completing your project.
Thank you.
And doing that important step to obtain such a worthy recognition. Okay?
Thank you so much.
I was down in the Lion's Park this weekend and I saw the work that you did, and that was an amazing project. It's going to be a great place for people to go down into the Big Ditch Park and have a nice picnic lunch and enjoy that scenery. I've known Michael since he was a 12-year-old scout, and we had lots of exciting times up at Camp Pohinnipee, didn't we? Thank you very much, Michael. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
One more thing I'd like to add is whether it's a Girl Scout project or a Boy Scout project, one of the great things that happens is the relationship between the scout and their parents. Because it's never, it's never just done along. The parents are always closely involved in the project, and it's a great way to build relationships between, between parents and their children.
Could I make a comment? I'd also like to thank Mr. Brown for allowing us to coordinate that on town property, and we actually look forward to being able to do that with, hopefully, a number of scouts in the future to have town projects that they can focus on.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown?
Well, thank you very much for everything. Congratulations, Michael. Thank you. I do have two other small reports. One is more of a statement. First of all, I think it continues to be reported that there was a hunting for the deer population in town. It is illegal to discharge a weapon in town. So it was illegal for anybody to, if they shot a bow or a gun at an animal, it was illegal. It is not legal to discharge the weapon. It's not, the state is, it's in the state's purview to allow hunting, but it's under our purview as far as the discharge of the weapon, and we do not allow that. Number two is, I think I talked, I know I did, I talked about the golf course. We were going to, there was going to be change of operation. Mr. Skavron, myself, and the university worked real hard to figure out a solution to the program, as well as Silver Fairways. And because of the time constraints, what has happened is that Silver Fairways was able to continue to maintain the operations of the clubhouse for the restaurant and the liquor, serving of liquor at the golf course and the clubhouse restaurant. And the university has taken over the operation of the golf course facility itself. And so there was a sublease between university, sublease from Silver Fairways under the current lease. We are looking at the long-term options of the actual operations out there, but I was out there there too after the changeover, and the changeover was seamless, like if ownership hadn't changed hands. So I really appreciate all the work Robert did on our behalf, because I was getting a little bit frustrated with a few things here and there. But it's all taken care of and that asset is going to continue working for the community. And as far as reports, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Next, anyone have any questions of Mr. Brown? Okay, next on the agenda is organizational meeting. I'm really looking forward to working with the staff and welcome all of you to this new administration. I look forward to the continuation of the excellent work this council and the town staff has done during the past years. I want to express appreciation to Mr. Brown and to Mr. Skavron and Ann and to the others in the office that have been so willing to help me get up to speed. Thank you very much. Now, it's time to elect a mayor pro temp. Do I hear any nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Ray, Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to nominate Counselor Cynthia Bediston as mayor pro temp.
Okay, thank you. By the way, nominations don't require a second. Is there another, any other nominations? Okay, so we'll close nominations. All in favor of Counselor Ames, of Counselor Bediston as being the mayor pro temp, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It appears that Counselor Bediston has been elected mayor pro temp. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. I appreciate your, the honor of serving you as mayor pro temp again.
The next item on the agenda, under 9B, is the appointment of councilors to committee and board positions. Since each of the councilors have a list of board and commissions in your pocket, I would like to keep the appointments the same. That is, Counselor Kano, the cemetery board, Counselor Ray, dispatch, Southwest Solid Waste, and Part... and Parks and Recreation, Counselor Amen Smith, library board and area transportation authority, Counselor Bediston, museum, and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, Mayor Ladner, dispatch board, Southwest Solid Waste, Grand County Water Commission, and ex officio of the Silver City Main Street Board. Do I hear any objections to any of these appointments? Thank you all very much for being so willing to serve. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, and there are none. The next item on the agenda, number 11, is unfinished business, and there is none. The next item on the, on the agenda is new business. Under 12A, new business, is the approval/disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1245, authorizing the issuance of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico Municipal Gross Receipt Tax Improvement Revenue Bonds. It appears that I will be the sponsor of this legislation, which will authorize the town to issue tax improvements, revenue bonds. Mr. Brown, would you please explain this legislation, why it's needed, and what the consequences will be?
Uh, Mayor and Council, this is a, an notice of intent to issue debt for the purpose of purchasing two additional recycling vehicles, side loaders, as well as the trash containers, both the residential, not trash, recycling containers, both residential and commercial. We're asking to have a limit of issuing up to $800,000. The vehicles right now are going to cost approximately $500,000. The recycling containers are somewhere around $200,000. As, as you've seen in the past, usually we ask for a little bit more under the NOI until we bring you the final documents, when we have the exact numbers. But this number may change significantly because, downward, because we're, we are going to, we are applying for funding to get the residential recycling containers, as well as the commercial recycling containers through a grant, so we won't have to pay for that portion of it. This will be paid through the solid waste fund, and it's going to be offset in two ways. One is we are going to decrease the recycling contract, which we have with the recycling, with Southwest Solid Waste Authority, by $74,000 this next year. And then, hopefully, through the increase of recycling, we shall see a decrease in tipping fees. So, that would be increased cash flow to add to the, to the debt service for this payment. We're looking around $120,000 annually. So, that's basically what we're looking at. We'll have to bring you the final ordinance and the bond documents in a month. And so, do you have any questions?
Um, Mr. Brown, just to clarify, because in the ordinance statement, it says it's the one-fourth percent municipal gross receipts tax is what the, we'll be using to...
Uh, yes, because, oh, just, yeah, yeah.
Just clarify that between...
Yeah, just to clarify, that's the, the collateral for the, for the, the loan. Sort of like we do with a lot of our water sewer fund loans and everything, is rather than going out and get a bond rating for the solid waste, the net system revenues, which is very expensive and very time consuming, we're just going to use a six increment as the collateral, even though we're going to be using the net system revenues of the solid waste fund to pay the, the debt.
Thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to make sure the public understood that the, that the fourth percent is, is the way of the collateral, so that we can use our established bond rating that we already have.
Yeah, under gross receipts taxes, because we have to buy ratings.
Yes, we do.
One is the, under, for our gross receipts, gross receipts taxes, which is an A-plus rating, and then the second is our net system revenues for the water sewer fund, which is an A-minus. It's very hard to get very good ratings for your net system revenue. So, along with this, I just want to add that, you know, we are going to bring a, an additional notice of intent, an ordinance later on, when we get, once we get close to the time of operations, so that we can have the ordinance in place to be able to enforce the recycling program, because we're going from the hand pickups to the automated pickups, and we're going to have to close containers compared to the open containers. We're going to have to have more monitoring from our code enforcement. So, there's some penalties for, there's already some penalties for dumping your trash in there, but, so we can clarify all of that. And then I'm going to propose that we change the way we set up the rate structure for the solid waste fund, becomes in line with how we do the water system, water sewer and wastewater rates currently. It is readjusted every year based on our operations and debt annually, and so I'll be bringing that at a later date.
One more question, Mr. Brown. So, the anticipation is that we're going to go through the process, we'll go through and get the, do the ordinance, do the bonds, do the other ordinance that you just mentioned, but it would really begin sometime in the new fiscal year?
It'll be in the new fiscal year at a minimum. I mean, I think we're looking somewhere between August, between August and October because of the time that it's going to take to order the equipment and the recycling, you know, and I'd rather wait a little bit longer so we can see if we get the, the grant for the, the containers, because I would much rather get a grant than us pay for it. So, you know, that doesn't go out till May, isn't awarded till May, so I won't have a decision on that till May. But we can order the garbage equipment right now. There's not as much of a time for the recycling containers as there is for the garbage trucks, so I can wait longer to order that stuff.
Well, I would tell you that I would gladly have had one of those new recycling containers yesterday, when my recycling came flying out of my little bin because of the wind that came up. So, I know that I would be, you know, forever grateful to get that soon, as soon as possible, but I know that we'll have to wait. And we'll also make public at that point, when we change over everything, the fact that we'll no longer be able to accept glass.
Yes. And the solid waste, I probably wanted to already implement that, but I told them, no, we're not going to implement it until we do the whole thing at one time.
Okay.
So, if there's change, I don't want phases of change. Let's just cut it off and have the public deal with it one time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? I'd like to encourage the city that before we implement the program, that we make sure that lots of information is disseminated to the community, so that people will know exactly what's going on, they'll know exactly what their role is in participating in, in the program. And I, I know you'll do that, but I want to make sure that, that we do.
Uh, yes, sir. I'm, well, we, we know that it's, it's going to be happening. We're working towards that right now. The only thing that you will not be able to recycle, that you can recycle right now, is glass. And so, that will be the only made, only change, real change, other than putting it in a container like your current trash container. But we'll explain that. Part of the program is, we've discussed it with Terry Timmy, who's our Office of Sustainability, and he focuses on recycling. He's going to focus on getting that public education, because it's very important, that public education, because we really want to push up the recycling rate, so we can increase it to decrease our cost of tipping fees, which is part of this payment process, so we don't have to raise rate. We can, we can generate that cash flow by recycling more, more material.
Great, thank you. Since I'm the sponsor of this legislation, I'm going to make a motion, and I'll ask for your patience. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm the sponsor of it. And before I do that, I would like to ask your indulgence, because it's a very long motion. I move to approve, to approve notice of intent to adopt ordinance 1245, authorizing the issuance of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico Municipal Gross Receipts Tax Improvement Revenue Bonds, Series 2016, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $800,000 for the purpose to, one, finance acquisition of equipment for the town's solid waste system for the benefit of the town and its residents, and two, pay, pay cost of issuance of the Series 2016 bonds, providing that the Series 2016 bonds will be payable and collectible from and secured by a pledge of the one-fourth percent municipal gross receipts tax distributed to the town pursuant to Section 7-19D-9 in NMSA 1978, as amended in Town Ordinance Number 1232, providing for the disposition of the receipts derived from said tax proceeds, providing that certain terms of the bonds will be provided in a subsequent resolution, prescribing other details concerning the bonds and tax proceeds, including but not limited to covenants and agreements in connection therewith in the form, terms, conditions, and manner of execution of the bonds, ratifying all action previously taken in connection, connection therewith, and repealing ordinances in conflict therewith. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second question stated.
Is there any further discussion among the council?
Mr. Mayor, a question. The ordinance in town that was, that you described in your statement, was that 1232 or 1237?
Should have been 1237.
So, I'll second the amended motion.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second for a notice of intent to adopt ordinance 1245, as more fully read into the record. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda, under new business 12B, is the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2016-11, a resolution declaring that the execution of a water rights lease between the Town of Silver City and the Town of Hurley is in the best interest of the town. I urge the adoption of this resolution for several reasons. First, as you may know, the Town of Hurley does not own any water rights, and currently buys its water rights, and will lose that lease in December 2018. The lease I am presenting will secure a source of water at no cost to Hurley for the next 40 years and is subject to renewal. Is that right, Mr. Scavron or, uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes, your honor.
Okay. Second, as I've said in several, several community forums during the past several months, and as some of the council members have also addressed, I believe very strongly in, and am committed to the regional water system for the benefit of communities in Grand County. We in Silver City have been blessed with a plentiful source of water, and I believe that we have a responsibility to share some of that water with other communities in Grand County. Mr. Brown, would you please describe the purpose of this lease and what is hoped to be achieved?
Uh, Mayor and Council, this project has been, this project has been going on for a number of years. I believe it's something like eight years that we've been working on it. And, and it's a project where we're putting together a regional water system, which would provide a main source, a primary source of water to Hurley, because they have no water rights themselves. They are currently purchasing water from the Freeport-Mackinac Mine. The water, the regional water system would also be a secondary source, supplemental source to Baird, Santa Clara, and the water associations between Hurley and Tyrone. In the end, that's the ultimate intent of it. The Town of Silver City was granted approval for 747 acre feet of recharge credits out at the Grant County Airport at two well sites that we had previously had out there, but we, we're focusing on the recharge credits here. And so, those are the ones that we're leasing, is the, the recharge credits. About 270 acre feet, which is the 40-year planned, projected 40-year water needs for the Town of Hurley right now. It also has some language in there for the continuation of the project, which would require Hurley to allow the additional communities to access the infrastructure, to get some of the additional water rights that we're going to enter into additional leases with those additional communities. We are not going to take over any water system. This is only a, a well and transmission facility, not a storage/distribution system such as what we own, Santa Clara owns, Baird owns. Hurley owns its own storage and distribution system itself, but it doesn't have that initial source, which is the wells and transmission into the town. That's the part that they don't own, as well as the right to pump that water, which is what we're talking about today. It's, it, right now, the, those water rights out there have very little financial benefit to the town, because it's very, very expensive to build the infrastructure, to get it from the airport to the Town of Silver City. The proposed project itself is a, total build out is $19 million, and if Silver City was going to use it alone, we would have to come up with $19 million just to access those water rights out there, as well as the additional operating costs, which would be tremendous to get it all the way from Hurley up to Silver City. Right now, we pump from our well fields up at Tyrone, from the Franks, Gabby Hayes, Woodward wells, it's pumped into town, and everything's gravity fed after that. Well, it's, there's some pumping, lift stations, but everything's gravity, so it's a lot cheaper to get it from the north than from the south. So, being that we are the shopping center of Grand County and the region, it's in the town's, town's best interest that our neighbors are strong, especially the mining district, because work where they shop, where their residents shop, and being that gross receipts taxes is our primary source of revenue, their, their shopping, by far, the far majority of their shopping is being done in the Town of Silver City, just as the town residents are being done. So, that's the intent, that's why it's so, it's to all of our interests, not just Hurley and the mining district, but it is to our interests just as much as it is to them. And that, if they're strong, we're strong, where there's area for development, for additional economic development in the region, you've got retail of those small types of development here, but you also have that type of development that can take place in the mining district. And you're not going to get development if you don't have strong infrastructure. That's the first stepping stone to get any business in the town, is to have infrastructure so that you can build it and develop it. So, that's why I believe it's such a big benefit to the town and its neighbors. So, with that, do you have any questions?
Councilor Amy, Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I just have a philosophical comment here, which is that what is in front of us is a resolution. And I want to remind everyone that a resolution is essentially a form of declaration of an intent or a principle. So, by this resolution, we're saying it is important for us as an... So by this resolution, we are saying it is important for us as an area to have our neighbors be taken care of, and I just really want to acknowledge that.
Any other comments? Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Brown for working so hard on this for a lot of years, and I think it's a great example of doing the right thing for the right reason. I remember one time I was talking to him, and he said, "Those are our cousins over there, we need to take care of them," you know, "they're, they're part of our community." Since I'm the sponsor of this resolution, I make a motion.
One last thing, the reason that I, one thing that I wanted to, to add is that we are to the point of final design of that first phase, which is the wells and transmission line into Hurley, so we're in the process, we're now of getting the funding to build it, and in fact, Hurley is going to be presenting this project to the Colonius Infrastructure Board tomorrow for a grant which is, they applied for $2 million, we've already got 2.1, so our, we're at that next step of gathering the funding, so that's why we need to get these agreements in place, because nobody's going to give us funding if we don't have, we don't have the water rights and access to it. And, and Hurley voted in favor of this lease last night, so it is approved by the Town of Hurley already. Okay.
I also appreciate Mr. Skavron using his legal expertise to make this happen in the fashion that it needed to happen for all of this to go forth. Since I'm the sponsor, any other comments?
No.
Since I'm the sponsor of this resolution, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-11, a resolution declaring that the execution of a water rights lease between the Town of Silver City and the Town of Hurley is in the best interest of the town. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, second motion.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. The roll call, the your answer.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ray?
Aye.
Councilwoman Condon?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item under new business, Item 12C, is the approval or disapproval of Request or Proposal Number 15/16-2P, General Engineering Support. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, Council, Mayor, Council, Town of Silver City received four, four RFP responses to, to this RFP, and the review committee has made a recommendation that we approve Engineers, Inc. of Silver City, New Mexico, Smith Engineering of Las Cruces, New Mexico, HDR Engineering of Albuquerque, New Mexico, as our engineers on call.
Okay. Does the council members have any questions or comments for Mr. Brown? Yes, Councilwoman Smith?
Mr. Brown, what with these on-call engineers, can you give examples?
Yes, for instance, currently our on-call engineers are Engineers, Inc. and Smith Engineering. They are used for the projects that we have as we go along for the development of projects such as, for instance, one of the projects that we worked, we're, we had a bid for tonight, the Vista de Plata subdivision project. What happens with the Town of Silver City is that when we, we identify a project that needs to be done, and we identify some good funding source, funding source that might make it a feasible project, we will start doing preliminary engineering, that's up to 30%, and so what we do is rather than going out to RFP or bid every time, is we take one of these on-call engineers and we use them to start the engineering process. So, for instance, most of our street projects are done by Engineers, Inc., Smith Engineering does most, oh, wait, Engineers, Inc. does most of our street and water sewer, Smith Engineering does our wastewater and land, old landfill projects right now, but HDR has some, some qualifications that we really like, that we thought we might want to take advantage of, and so, yes, there is just so we don't have to go out to bid every time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just want to clarify for the folks at home that because we have a territorial charter and we have our own procurement system, we're able to do this, whereas other municipalities are not permitted to do it, it's only for state agencies that can have on-call engineers.
Yes, that is correct, because we have a more lenient procurement code. Other municipalities can use the state contract that they might have an engineer with if that state agency has allowed for it. The DOT doesn't in their, in their contracts, but the others usually do. Now, in our case, we do.
Well, and that's why I want to say that's another strength of our territorial charter, and the fact that we are able to do that and have our own procurement code, rather than follow the state procurement code. So, this is an excellent example of how wonderful it is to have our own territorial charter.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve, request, I move to approve, I'm sorry, Proposal Number 15/16-2P, General Engineering Support, per staff recommendation to Engineers, Inc. Silver City, New Mexico, with Smith Engineering, the Las Cruces, New Mexico, and HDR Engineering, Albuquerque, New Mexico.
Second?
I'll second, then it's good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The next item under new business, Item 12D, is the approval, disapproval of Bid Number 15/16-4, Vista de Plata Drainage Project. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, Council, this is the Vista de Plata Fort Worth Housing Subdivision Project. It entails the continuation of the Vista de Plata Street, sidewalks, drainage, lighting, all the way down from, I can't remember the name of the street it actually is, from 10th Street where it starts to Kelly Street where it will, it'll loop back. And so, under this bid, we were able to get all the items that we had looked for. Initially, we didn't think we were going to be able to do the lighting all the way down the street, but we got a good enough bid that we actually are recommending to be able to award the whole thing. The town received, the town received $963,649 from the Colonius Infrastructure Fund Grant, 93,000 of that is the loan component, but the rest is, is grant. So, we received three proposals, one from Southwest, Southwest Concrete and Paving of Silver City, one from Spartan Construction of Santa Teresa, one from Merrill Enterprises from Las Cruces, New Mexico, and staff's recommendation to award bid lots one through six for a total of $859,649 plus gross receipts taxes to Southwest Concrete and Paving of Silver City, New Mexico.
Any questions or comments from the council? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve of Bid Number 15/16-4, Vista de Plata Drainage Project, and for it to be awarded per staff recommendation to Southwest Concrete and Paving Incorporated of Silver City, New Mexico. $33, okay. Bid lot number one, $542,426.60. Bid lot number two, $90,614. Bid lot number three, $41,174. Bid lot number four, $30,586. Bid lot number five, $53,936.80. Bid lot number six, $100,000, $1,911.60, excuse me, for a total project of $859,649 plus gross receipts tax.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion stated.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The last item on the agenda under new business, Item 12E, is the approval or disapproval of Bid Number 15/16-6, Polyethylene Trash Bags. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, Council, staff put out a bid for 32-gallon 2-mil bags as well as 60-gallon 1.6-mil bags. The 1.6-mil bags are for the Parks Department, and the 2-mil 32-gallon bags are the ones that we sell at City Hall, as well as the ones that we use in the 32-gallon trash containers like downtown, the parks, and things like some of the parks. But technically, we didn't need to go out to bid, we could have gotten written quotes for this, this project here, and there is some discrepancy with the 32-gallon bags, so, but there is not a discrepancy with the 1.6-mil 60-gallon bags, so I, it's staff's recommendation to award the 1.6-mil 60-gallon bags to Unipac from Brooklyn, New York. $950. These are supplies, we, we really didn't need to do this, but staff had put it out without thinking about it, and so we have to go through the process. It's out of state, so.
Any questions, comments from the council? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve of Bid Number 15/16-6, Polyethylene Trash Bags, per staff recommendation for the 1.6-mil 60-gallon bags to Unipac of Brooklyn, New York for $950.
Motion, a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We want to thank everybody for being here tonight and for taking an interest in city government.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.